Was able to share with them in regards to just the general structure and benefits of early college. As Dr. Pataville stated, we don't have necessarily all of the specifics worked out, but I wanted them to be aware of the work that I'm doing. And so, once again, I meet with them monthly to discuss just what's going on at Marshall, so everybody stays abreast. And then, I also had an opportunity with Dr. Creer, our executive principal, to meet with our PTO and some other stakeholders that had questions in regards to early college and previous program programming that's been at Marshall in regards to engineering. So those two opportunities, in addition, as Dr. Pataville stated, we have the January 15th meeting coming up, so that I've been able to share that information out. And as we continue on this, like I say, roadshow in regards to sharing information, we will continue to engage all stakeholders. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that clarification. And I just do want to be sure that in all of these high schools that we are being purposeful about engaging not only a broad cross-section of parents, but making sure that our current parent leaders are involved and able to give some feedback. So, thank you. Thank you for your efforts and for your continued efforts as we go forward. I think it's going to be important to developing a good, solid program in each of these feeder patterns. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you, Ms. Purdean.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossen. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have another comment or question?
Yeah, I just want to kind of go back, Deanna, to what you said about the kids in this program will have an advantage. But, again, that kind of works counter if the kids are coming from outside. So, once again, you're talking about hurting zone kids. And, you know, I asked, actually asked a question this past week about the impact of academy kids at our current academies, or actually, the impact on our zone kids. And depending on how you look at the numbers, some of the bigger academies, like the global studies, out of the top 10%, at Clemens, 30% were enrolled in that. Not any, none of those kids were actually zoned to Clemens. Okay, so they're taking away the top 10% opportunities. At Dulles, depending on how you want to look at it, it's 80 to 94%. It depends on whether you want to include the zone kids in that academy. So, those academies are taking away the opportunities of the kids that are zoned. So, we do not want that to happen. So, we need to, I mean, we've been talking about this for years, okay? So, you know, how's this school within the school going to work? And how is it going to affect the rank? And so, we, you know, we need to do the right thing, because the whole point of the top 10% rule was to give kids who were at a disadvantage the chance to attend the top 10 Texas schools. And so, we don't want to work against that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you and Dr. Undelacato. I want to, we appreciate the presentation. Thank you to the principals that came here this evening. Also, I wanted to thank my fellow board members for their comments and questions. I think there was some good conversation here and some things that we as a board are, some of the concerns that we have. And we look forward to more information and how this develops in the future, so. Up next is the grading pilot update.
Right. Deanna, you going to go ahead and get started on that one?
Absolutely. Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. This evening, we are pleased to present the Board an update on our grading pilot. I don't have the clicker, but... There we go. We're going to start our presentation this evening by sharing with you some background in terms of why it was important for us to do this pilot, what we learned, and what the anticipated results are. We're going to talk to you about pilot components and tools for success that we've discovered over the course of the pilot. We have several campus staff here who are going to share some specific examples about their experience with the grading pilot. We also want to share with you some focus group feedback and lessons learned and next steps. Before we begin, I would like to introduce all of the principals who have been part of the grading pilot. Colony Bend Elementary School Principal Elizabeth Williams. Arneal Elementary School Principal Lori Hoffman. Oyster Creek Elementary School Lisa Langston. Patterson Elementary School Principal Carrie Bruin. Sartarsha Middle School Principal Melissa King Knowles. And Sugarland Middle School Principal Keith Fickle. This evening, our presenters will be Assistant Superintendent Dr. Quabina Menza, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Stephanie Williams, Carrie Bruin, who will be presenting on behalf of her peers, and one of her teachers will also be presenting as well. So, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Williams at this time, so she can get us started.
Good evening. In 2017-18, the Board approved an update to policy EIA Local. This policy defines the grading philosophy for Fort Bend ISD. That philosophy, which is shown on this screen, centers around... Centers around Board... Send, okay, sorry. Centers around Board Goal 2, which is related to development of student ownership of learning. As Deanna shared, this year, Academic Affairs engaged six campuses. Their mascots are shown on this screen in the pilot to explore the use of standards-based grading within Fort Bend ISD. Standards-based grading aligns closely to student ownership tools found within the written curriculum, in that both teachers and students utilize learning progressions to evaluate student progress towards proficiency in the curriculum. The grading pilot components were established to utilize a design team structure, so that this pilot wasn't something developed in central office and handed down to our teachers, but that this pilot was something that teachers developed for the students in Fort Bend ISD. There are four components that comprise the grading pilot. First is professional learning, which there was initial summer professional learning, where teachers, grade-level teams of teachers engaged in learning around the philosophy of standards-based grading and a structure that would support the students and parents throughout the process. Additionally, in the professional learning, teachers evaluated their own capacity related to collaboration within professional learning communities, parent communication, knowledge of our Texas essential knowledge and skills, and the, most importantly, the use of formative assessment to identify student needs. After professional learning, it was important to utilize teacher feedback to develop a strong structure for the pilot process. This process engages grade-level teams in the use of the written curriculum to identify what we call grading competencies. Now, for years, we've talked about how the standards in Texas are a mile wide and an inch deep. These grading competencies identify high-leverage standards or ideals within the curriculum that students must master. Teachers then collaborated to develop learning progressions that articulate the skills and behaviors students should know within the grade level. And finally, the success criteria, which you've heard us reference before in the written curriculum, are articulated to define the grade-level proficiency for students. Within the pilot process, we knew that feedback tools were of a primary importance. So, the feedback tools for students were rubrics, checklist, and the instructional practice called self-impeer assessment. For parents, we developed student tracking sheets as a communication tool, so that they knew the progress their students were making towards proficiency. Most importantly, within any pilot, we recognized that we were likely to hit hurdles along the way, and we needed a structure for feedback, so that we could engage in continuous improvement. So, we set up two focus groups, focus groups in the fall and in the spring. We've utilized surveys with parents along the way, and we've engaged teachers through job-embedded professional learning in order to identify what's going well and where things need to be adjusted. This slide shows an example of two of the pilot school, or tools. I think I can use this. At the top, you see the learning progression. This learning progression defines knowledge, skills, and behavior for the grade level for the student. Proficiency defines your grade-level standard. And student grades are reported using the monikers developing, progressing, proficient, or advanced. So, this is different than traditional compliance-based grading in that students don't receive a percentage grade, rather, they receive for each progression where they fall along the learning progression. The success criteria at the bottom help students, parents, and teachers identify where students are in their learning and what it is that they need to work on in order to improve. Within the grading pilot, the key is feedback, both to teachers or both to parents and students. And so, these support tools were critical, are critical to the success. On this slide, you see the progression that you just saw in the previous slide, along with the success criteria in purple. Within a classroom, once students are, complete a formative task, they would look at this progression and identify their next step in learning in order to engage in goal-setting and have the opportunity to revise their work in order to show their learning or demonstrate the mastery of their learning. These all relate to grade-level content standards or competencies. In collaboration with the Profile of the Graduate Task Force, we also looked at learner characteristics. This example shows effective communicator, the strand from the Profile of the Graduate attribute. And teachers utilize this type of tool with students to engage them in self-reflection and to provide feedback tied to their behavior towards developing the skills of an effective communicator. This particular tool aligns to the work that is currently going on with our Profile of the Graduate Task Force, where they are working on a badging and recognition system, so that students can be recognized for the development of attributes along their career within Fort Bend ISD. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our third-grade teacher, Erica Carroll from Patterson Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about what impact this has done on our student learning. As we started the year, we talked about these rubrics and checkpoints, and we could visualize kind of what it was going to do to our students. But until we got into the classroom and really started applying it with them, it was just amazing to see the learning that occurred. We have all students, all different type of learners, with all different types of backgrounds, coming into a classroom, and they feel successful, whether they are in the developing stages of the progression or in their proficiency. They are able to look and see, hey, this is where I am. This is where I need to go, and these are the steps that help me. And it really allows the student to work with the end in mind. So, they know, hey, by the end of the year, this is what I need to do. It's not like in traditional grading, where if a student gets an 80 on the test, that's it, we move on, that's the best that they did. So, this does allow the students the capability to continue to grow in their learning. It also allows students to have a voice, and that is very powerful. For a student to say, I am struggling in these areas. I know I understand, you know, steps one and two, but I just can't figure out the third step to get me to the next level. And they're able to voice that using academic vocabulary. It changes everything in the classroom. I'm going to show you all a quick video of a student expressing their learning, utilizing a rubric and their work. And I do apologize, the sound is a little bit low, just because it is in the classroom, so there's a lot of background knowledge, I'm sorry, background noise, but just bear with it.
Ma'am, you're, I don't believe your microphone's on.
I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry. Yes, so in the video, what the student was doing is they were looking at their work. And if you notice in the bottom right-hand corner, that is the checklist that the students co-created with the teacher. The checklist that they utilized has visual representations, so that way, students, if they might not understand the academic vocabulary, they can associate the illustration to show what it is that they're trying to accomplish. So, here she is with the checklist. She's going through, looking at her work and analyzing it, and seeing where she is in the progression, you know, is she proficient? What are her next steps? And they're able to tell us this. We don't have to do a lot of the talking, the students are doing the talking. A lot of times when I meet with my students, they already know where they stand. And they're asking me, hey, how can you help me get to the next level? And so, it really just changes the dynamic of the classroom. Here are a couple of examples, not only from our campus, but across the district, of how we're using student ownership to really drive the learning. A lot of these examples that we have presented to you tonight are not in classrooms that are utilizing the grading pilot, but they're utilizing the documents already embedded in the curriculum that allow for student ownership and student voice. And it really just makes a difference when students are able to vocalize their learning and able to express themselves of what they have mastered in a classroom. And there, these are two videos that we're not going to play for you tonight, but it does show how students are able to utilize the feedback that they receive from not only their teachers, but also their peers. And they're able to take that and develop it into improving not only their classwork, but also to improve the student as a whole. Their growth mindset changes, and it's saying, I can't, I'm not able to, I'll never understand this. They're utilizing what people are telling them, and they're applying it into their knowledge and saying, wait, if I try this, I might be able to understand this. And so, it really does help the student build that confidence needed to be successful in the classroom. And now, I'd like to turn it over to my principal, Carrie Bruin, and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Menza.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Don't you want Erica as your third-grade teacher? Thank you, Board, so much. I have been in Fort Bend ISD since 2001, and I am so proud to work in this district. I think we are doing amazing things. And I am so glad that you're allowing our teachers and students to embark on this journey. My role is to support these wonderful teachers. So, Erica is just one of them, and I have many more. The first thing is to provide that safe environment for risk-taking. So, we're constantly failing, and those are opportunities for learning. And if the teachers feel that, then the students will feel that as well. Also, support and training. The Teaching and Learning Department has been amazing in supporting our teachers in this work and then providing feedback and celebrating all of the successes that we have. I'm confident that standards-based grading is making a difference in our students knowing who they are as learners and owning what they learn. Our students are shifting from earning an A or a B to really understanding, appreciating, and even valuing what they learn. I thank you so much for allowing us to do this.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, and Dr. Dupree. I'm really proud to stand before you and report that we have some trailblazing principals in our district. This is some extremely challenging work, but they took on the work, and they're very committed to it. And they've been great examples and models for other principals in the district about the great work that we can do for our kids. So, for us in the Department of School Leadership, we partnered with Academic Affairs to make sure that we create an environment to support the principals as they risk-take every single day. So, you can see that Carrie Bruin is one of the examples of our pilot principals. She's done this at Patterson, and we have five other extraordinary principals who are doing the same kind of work. They've also taken this work, and they brought it back to the principals, and they presented at a recent principal meeting to show how the benefits of the work for our students could be at different campuses. So, we're really proud of the work that we're doing, and we're going to continue to support them with collaboration between both departments. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie Williams to talk about feedback and next steps.
Thank you, Quabina. The focus group feedbacks were really important to all members of the pilot, because we knew that we needed to hear the voice of our parents, our teachers, and our students throughout the process. So, in November and December, we engaged on all six campuses, focus groups of parents, teachers, and students in order to gain information tied to three key parts of the grading pilot. First, what is the level of understanding of standards-based grading? Second, what impact are they seeing from standards-based grading? And finally, what is the effectiveness of the support tools? How could we provide better support to those stakeholders, parents, teachers, and students? And so, some of the feedback that we gained from parents was around understanding. They, as you can imagine, most of us were under compliance-based grading, and this transition to receiving developing, progressing, proficient was a difficult transition. And they let us know that they needed a higher degree of training for themselves in order to learn how to use the tools that their students were using. They also let us know that they have questions around how standards-based grading will impact students as they go up through our system into high school. And we are not taking this feedback lightly. We are really studying, so that we can provide answers as we continue to meet with parents. Related to impact, this was probably one of the most discussed areas in the focus group feedback at all campuses. First, overwhelmingly, all three stakeholder groups report that students' use of academic vocabulary significantly increased. I spoke personally to the parent of an English-language learner, and he said, learning English is her first priority, and this has helped her do that. And that really meant a lot, because we weren't sure how it would go. The second piece around student impact is that students can truly articulate what they can do and what they need to work on, which is important in building student confidence to engage in the learning process. The other key piece of impact that we received feedback on in the focus groups was related to our teachers. The first piece of feedback was hard to hear, because this grading pilot has asked a lot of our teachers. It is a significant workload for them to develop the progressions and the tools that their students use. Of course, when you talk to them about that workload, they don't stop talking there, because they also talk about what they've learned as teachers. They've gained a greater understanding of their standards. They have more clarity in working with students. And most importantly, they have tools to identify what it is that kids need in order to be successful. We have additional focus groups scheduled in the spring, and we will continue to work with each campus in order to provide effective support towards the feedback that we've already received. Thinking about some of the lessons learned, I mentioned the impact of the workload on teachers, and we know that we could design our summer professional learning differently, so that it could be differentiated to allow time for teachers to create some of the tools ahead of whenever students start the school year. Another lesson learned is that teacher capacity related to collaboration in PLCs, the use of formative assessment, and knowledge of their standards is highly important in success within standards-based grading. Related to the implementation scale, obviously, we have some campuses who are implementing at a higher scale, and we did learn that size matters. When there is a higher degree of implementation, the support must go up, so that teachers, students, and parents have what they need to be successful. When we think about where are we going to go from here, we know that we have work to do around professional learning design for all teachers in Fort Bend ISD to engage the tools in the curriculum, and also for teachers who will continue to engage in standards-based grading, so that we can remove some of that during the school-year workload. Tied to an implementation plan, we are not at a point where we would recommend going with standards-based grading across a grade level or up through, throughout all grade levels in Fort Bend ISD. We're going to take the remainder of this year to design a long-term approach to how standards-based grading can be there for our teachers and our students in order to continue to design student ownership experiences. And then, finally, this year, as you know, after revising policy EIA Local, we're developing regulations. Within the grading regulations, we will have regulations tied to those classrooms that are utilizing standards-based grading. And we will also look to adjust the compliance-based grading related to the number of grades and what it is that we grade, so that we're in alignment with policy EIA Local. Before I move to questions, I think it's important for you to know that a pilot such as this takes an investment at all levels of the organization. And there are people all over this room who have contributed to the successes that we've seen with our students. I'd like for them to stand and be recognized for their work in the pilot at this time. And now, we can take any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a question or a comment, please?
Yes, sir. So, Stephanie and I met last week for about an hour and a half or so, and just so I can get a better understanding of this. So, could you clarify? So, a lot of the elementaries, if not all of them, are doing some type of student ownership, but there's only a few that are actually using the grading pilot.
Yes, sir. Let me go back a few slides. So, the difference, all elementaries are utilizing tools such as what you see here, where we have a progression for learning and where students are given success criteria to gauge how they do on a formative task. In traditional elementary school grading, they might receive a percentage grade on an assignment, whereas in standards-based grading, they determine that they're at developing, which clearly defines which of these success criteria they can do, so that teachers can differentiate instruction and help them move forward along the progression.
Okay, and so, that's kind of where the difficulty lies in the communication, and I can appreciate that. It was where parents are used to, like, you know, you explained to me, parents are used to seeing a letter, you know, or a percentage, and they kind of know, they kind of have an idea, okay, here's how my kid's doing. I need to get him help or her help or whatever. Whereas now, they're, you know, they're getting this, you know, developing, progressing, or, you know, meets, you know, whatever you call it, proficient. I should know that. But, so, it's difficult. And I would say that I think there's a lot, a lot of work to do, but I would say this is definitely risk-taking at a district level. And I think it's good. I think, I wish I had some of this, you know, when I was, did my year. And, basically... Somebody's trying to hide back there. I saw you, chief. This is kind of like a T-test for kids, right? Isn't that a good description of it?
Yes, yes, sir.
And those could be really brutal, depends, but my was really good. Anyway, so, one of the, I actually was talking to a parent about this the other day. And how will some of our, I know we're not calling them district assessments anymore, I forget what you're calling them, but how will we be able to correlate those with the, you know, proficient and with the grading standards?
Learning assessments are already scored, utilizing a rubric or a progression, just like you see here. So, I would say there's a strong correlation to what students do in the grading pilot to what we're asking all teachers to do with the learning assessments.
Okay, so, they're not, so, for the learning assessments, we're not giving letter or percentage grades for those?
No, sir. We are ranking students using the progression that you see up here. So, a teacher in third grade would report on the number of students who scored developing, progressing, proficient, and advanced. And what we're looking for between the fall and the spring is movement to the right along that progression.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess the concern is, is once these kids start taking STAR tests, is how will this, how will proficient correlate to a score on a STAR test? Because that's what the state cares about.
So, in correlation to the STAR test, the students are utilizing academic vocabulary every day in the classroom. So, they're taking that academic vocabulary that the STAR test relies heavily on, and they're able to apply those skills, because they're working kind of backwards, because they have to not only understand, okay, in reading, I have to synthesize, but now, they know how to create that synthesis without having a multiple choice. They're able to explain their answer. And that explanation of knowledge is what allows them to be successful when it comes time to a standardized test. A lot of students, when I do give a standardized question with multiple, they're like, that's so easy, because all the work they've done in the classroom explains what it is that they actually need to know.
Right. I think if that works out that way, I think you're absolutely right. I think these kids will do really well, because that's what the, you know, the STAR, basically, well, most of it, it tests your understanding and how to apply what you've learned. You know, there's always some, you know, definition types, but... So, if these kids can explain it to each other and show proficiency, I think they'll do well. But, we'll see. Let's hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James, do you have any questions? Mrs. James, do you have any questions?
I just have a quick comment. I wanted to thank all the people that have been working on this pilot because it's a huge, huge risk, as you said, and a huge, um, um, learning, uh, learning curve and learning environment for everybody. So, I appreciate you, all the leaders being willing to, to try it, and I appreciate all the teachers particularly who, who might have said something behind their principal's back when they, when the principal walked out of their room, but, but, but I hope that, um, that, I hope that, um, I'm, I'm just glad to hear the reports, the anecdotal reports, that we see glimmers of success. So, I want to recognize that, and I also, because in, you know, one of the board goals talks about creating an environment where we can all take risks and, and celebrate successes. So, that's for the students foremost, but it's also for all of us, because we all know that's how we learn. So, I'm excited to see that board goal in action, and I appreciate that, um, that it's not always easy to do that. Um, and, and I appreciate you accepting the challenge. Um, I guess what it boils down to, Mr. Rosenthal asked a lot of good questions, but what, one of the things it boils down to is it sounds like there's a tremendous workload that has to, we have to figure out how to not swamp and overwhelm our campus staff in order to do something new. So, do we have some strategies about how to do that besides Mrs. Williams burning the candle at both ends and some other folks? How do we, how do we navigate that?
I'll speak to a strategy that some of the other principals in the room have already used this year. Um, once we realized what it was taking for teachers to develop the progressions and the tools for students, we worked with principals to extend the planning time of those teachers so that they had time to do that work while at school. And obviously, once you have those tools developed, you can reuse them. So, the initial workload is hard, and then over time, it's a refinement. And so, that's one of the strategies that we're using. And then, as I mentioned, um, redesigning teacher professional learning, looking at innovators like Ms. Carol and her team, and having kind of a strand of learning for them in the summer where they get to engage in these practices while we know they're still learning at higher levels will take some relief as well.
So, I really liked that idea. It sounds like an innovative scheduling kind of concept, and I really appreciate that because I know one of the things teachers value the most is their planning time and how they can get or get their own brains and materials organized to be effective when they're face-to-face with the students. So, I appreciate the creativity there, and I, I, I'm sure other people have some great ideas, so probably in the continuous improvement process, you'll be able to get some, some ideas that, that can be implemented. Uh, because we don't want, I don't want teachers to feel like this is one more thing, this is overwhelming me, this is negative, eh, eh, to have a negative experience because we, as the leaders and decision-makers, aren't managing the, um, the expectations in their time and their workload, I guess. So, I appreciate that. And then, my other question had to do with, Mr. Rosenthal asked us, but how are we, uh, you know, as a, as a school year finishes, I guess I'm curious to know, how do these students, um, how do they perform sort of end of the year? What are their end-of-year results so that we can sort of see what kind of impact, um, compared to their peers, um, eh, eh, with similar demographics, did we see? Um, so, I'm curious to know that, same as Mr. Rosenthal said. And then, I, the, uh, the last thing I'd say is, are we using this in sort of inclusive environments where we have a variety of students being exposed, or are we doing this in the GT classes, or, or what's happening with that?
In, um, my class in particular, I have all range of learners. I have students that, um, you know, have accommodations. I have English language learners. I have gifted and talented. And what is amazing is to see their face light up when they grow. And it's not about, let me get to advance, it's about the little steps that they're taking and their understanding, their learning. And a lot of times, students would get frustrated and just shut down. Now, we say, look at your checklist, take it one step at a time. Let's look at, you know, for example, in the success criteria, read independently for a sustained period of time. What does that look like for you? Okay? It looks like five minutes. Great, let's try and move it to eight minutes. And setting those steps and setting those goals really helps all learners be successful in the classroom.
That's awesome. Sounds like you're getting them ready for college. Sounds great.
Yes, one quick one. Um, for, to, to help alleviate some of the stress on the teachers, is, are these, um, the, uh, rubrics and whatnot, are they available to share in Schoology so that teachers across campuses can see what others are doing and rather than reinventing wheels?
So, we did engage in a celebration of practice where teachers were able to share their experiences with each other, and we do have a Schoology group for the grading pilot teachers, and some of them are already naturally collaborating where the content and the grade level is the same.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Great presentation. I love the, the student ownership piece, the student engagement piece. Now, I have a better understanding. I've been asked in the community a few times, and I haven't been able to provide the level of detail that I would like to. So, I appreciate you enlightening us, and I, I look forward to this with the, I, I have a student, my son, who, um, we're trying to get him back to grade level, and, um, this is a program that could, I, I, I feel is really helpful to us and to him, and, um, so, I think it's, it's great. As Mr. Rosenthal said, this is a great risk, um, that we're taking, and so, I look forward to the future. If it's okay with my fellow board members, um, I would like to, instead of going into closed session, I would like to vote on our consent and action items. Mrs. Tosan, who's joining us this evening, has a four o'clock her time business meeting, which is eight o'clock our time, and she would like the opportunity to vote. So, with that being said, um, and then we will finish the rest after, um, we'll do the, the consent agenda, the action items, we will then go into closed session, and then we will come back out and finish the rest of the meeting. So, first things first, we will now consider our consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Burdine. I would like to remove, uh, consent agenda item 11D3B under the architectural engineering firm pool selection, remove MWA Architects from that list.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm...
Go ahead, Mrs. James.
I'd also like to remove a li- item 11C1.
All right. Any other items? All right.
You ready for a motion, Mr.?
May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the, um, that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 11C1 and 11D3B.
We have a motion by Mrs. James.
Well, second.
And a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion?
I might have made a mistake, so I'm not sure.
Well, my, my request was just to simply remove the one architect firm, MWA Architects, and vote on the rest.
Understood.
M- m- Mr. Board President, uh, and Mr. Rice, I think we're going to have to remove the item from the consent agenda, and then that motion can be made at the time that you consider it independently.
All right. Mr. Rosenthal?
So, we, so, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Burdine, but we have a motion for the consent agenda with the exclusion of those two items, so we should probably go finish those, and then we can pick up the other items.
So, did we have any, did we have any discussion on the consent agenda?
Did, was there a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
There was a motion ba- made by Mrs. James and a second made by Mr. Rice, and a third by Mr. Rosenthal. Any discussion? Please vote. Mrs. Tosan, if you could please vote by hand. Motion passes. Next, we will now consider item 11D3B. May I have a motion? Mr. Rosenthal?
Motion to approve as presented.
I thought we were striking something, Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, so, we're just pulling it and do it separately, right? We're just going to do it separately, right?
That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Well, I think for, uh, uh, item, oh, excuse me, item 113...
11D3B.
11D3B, you need an original motion to approve as recommended.
May I have a?
Well, I, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move we approve agenda item 11D3B as recommended, with the exception that MWA Architect Firm be struck from the list.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mrs. Tosan. We, do we have discussion?
Well, I'll have discussion if a motion is made to put them back on.
No, no, we, you don't, it's fine.
Well, so, it, so at this time, you have a second, uh, a motion and a second to consider that item with the exception of MWA Architects. Uh, and so, you don't need a motion to amend, you can just consider the item.
All right. Motion passes.
And I believe Mr. Rosenthal had an, another motion.
No, actually, that was the one that I had, I had said, so, we just did it twice.
No, this is a motion independent to MWA Architects.
Okay. I don't have that. I do not have it.
Well, I, uh...
Well, that's all right. We have a, we have a motion that Ms. Perez will bring to Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for this. We didn't, we didn't plan this until now, but we're running out of time, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. I move the board approve MWA Architects to be included within the pool of recommended design firms for the 2018 bond program, that the firm be eligible for the assignment of bid packages, and that we authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with the firm.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion?
Yes. So, I've asked, uh, to pull this originally because my wife used to be employed, uh, with this firm but retired in, um, this past summer. However, uh, she sold the firm to her partners, uh, but she has a note on that, and so, the law requires me to disclose that and also to refrain from voting, so I'll not participate in the deliberations or the vote, but I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now consider item 11C1.
Mr. President, I move to approve, uh, item 11C1 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. James.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions about this, um, and, uh, I, I, I sent them in, and so, but I would like to just bring it all up so that I'm sure that the rest of the board has thought of these things and, and, and thought of this. So, um, I, I guess I want to preface this by saying I recognize that we need more staff, and so, um, so I am, you know, generally positive about the whole thing. I know we're identifying more special ed students. I know we have low-performing campuses that need, eh, help. I just want to be sure that what we're planning or the staff members that we're hiring are going to be impactful, and I want to make sure we've thought it out. So, that kind of, that's one piece of it. The other piece is the financial impact, and I, uh, sent a couple of questions to Mr. Basset because, um, my understanding, and now I'm not looking at the numbers, but, uh, I can't remember the total amount of this, but I was concerned, wait a minute, we're already planning, um, that we have an estimated deficit of close to $11 million. So, is this adding to that deficit, uh, for this year, and how are we going to manage that financially? So, that's my first question. Could you walk us through the financial impact, please?
Um, yes, ma'am. So, I think, uh, one of the handouts that, that the board was given included, was included this table, okay? I think it's on, uh, page three of the, this, uh, the one labeled December 13th. And so, wi- within that, um, our projection for 1819, including all of the new positions, is a loss of 10.5 million, okay? The, uh, and with that, with that loss, we will still have 95 days of fund balance, okay, for, for 1819? Uh, the, um, so that's where we're at with that.
So, just to interrupt you quickly, so that was including these new positions or exclusive of it?
Including these positions.
Okay, okay.
Okay. And then, when you look at, when you look at the future years, we do start getting into, uh, amounts below 90 days, but each of those include 2% raises, but, and then also, we don't know the impact of, uh, any changes in state aid, including some of the potential, uh, revenue that we've been promised regarding property value loss from Hurricane Harvey, so that there's, there's a lot of uncertainty with regard to 1920 and beyond. But just understand that tho- all of those years include compounding 2% raises, and, uh, so, you can see that without any kind of intervention or any kind of new, new, uh, revenue, we will need to, you know, take some action.
Okay, so, thank you for that. So, we'll have to just be mindful of that as we're going forward in the budgeting process, but I just wanted to bring that up because when we start to have a deficit budget, it starts to make me nervous.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, and then the second thing is, maybe Dr. Obvious, you could speak to, uh, my questions were sort of around, you know, we've got an edge program that, that's working in some ways, maybe these people are going to be used to bring us aspects of that to other campuses. How are we using these people? Um, and I'm, I'm focused primarily on the non-special ed because I recognize the special ed need, so if you could address that, please.
Okay, so, our focus was on literacy, social, emotional well-being, and of course, behavior. Um, and internally, we're calling this Edge Light, uh, because it's not the complete edge package, uh, but we all obviously see the need to, uh, have some of these positions, uh, going back. Our focus is going to be the behavior and the literacy, and of course, the social, emotional well-being. There are some programs that are also included, and so, some of those programs, you know, such as, uh, Be a Champion, uh, you know, of course, activity-based learning. Uh, Be a Champion is a program that is, it benefits our students, uh, after school. It provides, uh, a service where they're able to receive a meal, uh, they're able to receive, uh, instructional support. Uh, there are also, uh, parents like to utilize that program because it allows the student to, uh, stay at school a little bit longer than typical days. Um, you know, when we look at PBIS Region Four, uh, that specifically is something that two of our campuses, uh, the Edge campuses, Briar Gate and Ridgemont, utilized last year, and they utilized these services that Region Four provided. So, internally, we met with, uh, members of Academic Affairs, we obviously discussed this with the campus principals, DSL obviously had the same conversations, and we didn't want to bring the full package, but we did consider some of the items, and, and of course, some of the concepts that we've seen benefit our students.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Any other questions? Motion passes. Next up, we will now consider our action item. Approval of the 2012A1, consider, consideration and approval of the 201819 Superintendent Evaluation Instrument.
Uh, Mr. Burdine, I move that we approve the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument as it was corrected today. Uh, Mr. Burdine, I move that we approve the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument as it was corrected today.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs., Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. All right, we will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.